And open.
I will, and I have begun the recording. And good afternoon, and thank you all for attending today's candidate forum presenting the candidates for District 158 School Board members. My name is Anna Gifford. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of McHenry County. Our purpose is to promote responsibility through informed and active participation of all our citizens. Providing this forum enables members of the community to be better informed about the issues facing the community and the candidates that are running for office. In line with current CDC guidelines, our forum will be held virtually using Zoom. It allows excellent opportunity for candidates to participate and for the community to view the forum at their convenience. The structure is in alignment with both state and natural League of Women Voter guidelines. During our presentation, only the moderator, timer, and candidates will appear on the screen. We will not be using chat or raised hand features. Questions for the candidates have been submitted by various community members and groups. Participants of the forum have been advised of contact information in the event a candidate loss loses connectivity and needs to rejoin. Should a candidate be offscreen and miss the opportunity to answer a question due to a technical issue? When they will return, they will be given one minute to answer the question they missed. I am pleased to introduce today's moderator, Kate Williams. Kate is president of the McHenry County Chapter of the League of Women Voters and is a trained moderator. We are fortunate she is able to be with us today. Kate will begin by presenting the forum rules and guidelines.
Thank you, Anna. I'm really excited and it's my pleasure to be able to moderate this forum. To maintain impartiality, I'm not eligible to vote in this race. I live in Crystal Lake. So let me take a few minutes to explain the format and the rules of the forum. All the candidates were contacted by mail, email, and phone, and have agreed to abide by these rules provided by the League of Women Voters. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order, and the moderator will rotate this order during the questions. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, then, and will rotate that through. Then each person will have one minute to answer the questions, and I'll certainly repeat the questions if needed. And then, at the end, you'll have a two-minute closing statement. Rich Wosman is our timer, and Rich, the candidates will be given a thirty-second warning, so try and complete your thoughts. And then, we do enforce the time limit, so we'll certainly allow you, after the stop sign, to finish your sentence. We are recording it, and we use that to educate the public. A link for the forum will be posted early next week on our website. We'll also provide you with that link to put on your website. We ask that it be not edited and given in its entirety and no duplications. The League does claim copyright ownership of the recordings, and we use this to, again, educate the public. There are nine candidates in Huntley vying for four positions. Four of the candidates were able to be with us this afternoon. One candidate did submit a statement that I'll read after the present candidates read their, or give their opening statement. Unfortunately, other people were not able, due to scheduling conflicts, to join us today. Thank you for your participation. You are truly an asset to your community. So, by virtue of the draw, we've determined the first speaking will be Sean, and I'll let each candidate introduce themselves. Sean, one-minute opening statement.
Sure. So, my name is Sean Craddy. I am newly elected to the Board of Education this past July, filling Mr. Flex's position. You know, heavily involved in the community, do a lot of different boards and activities within the community. I have three young children within the district, fifth grade, first grade, and a soon-to-be kindergartner, and look forward to being on the board for some time here and really just looking to give back and listening to, you know, all the teachers, the community, and staff that we have in this great community. So, thanks for having me.
Great, thank you. Sean, next will be Tara.
Hi, I am Tara Messino. I have been in the area about twenty-one years. I have two children, one that's currently in the district as a kindergartner in the dual-language program, and then I have one that cannot wait to be a kindergartner, but she's got a whole 'nother year to go. I've spent my career and personal time focusing on the development of people, from creating coaching and development strategies for employees globally or involuntary activities that drive the education of our kids, things like junior achievement and team world vision, supporting the development of women in business or in motherhood. I am passionate about being a positive force and role model for all of our kids, and I believe I can bring that perspective to the school board. I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
All right, our third person, Kate.
Hi there, I'm Kate Polaterry. I have three students in this district. My, I have a freshman, a seventh grader, and a fifth grader. I, so, obviously because I have three kids in this district, I am invested in our district, I am invested in the teachers in our district. I believe by supporting our teachers, that would, that directly impacts our students. I participate in the Special Education Advisory Committee. Special education is a passion of mine, and I hope to bring the Nora Project to Huntley, which teaches students empathy and inclusivity. I am a pharmacist for Walgreens, so I participate daily in our community. But I look forward to participating on the board, and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Tony.
Good afternoon, I'm Tony Quagliano, current District 158 Board President. I've been a member of the board for fourteen of the last fifteen years. I'm a certified public accountant with thirty-five years of experience as CPA, currently a partner for the last, partner with my current firm for the last thirty years, Eric J. Fernandez and Company in West Dundee. I've had three boys go start to finish through District 158 and graduate. They're all trying to finish up college, hopefully someday. And then, you know, I, the whole time I've been on the board, I've served as our Finance Committee Chair. That's obviously a strength of mine, but I really excel in working with people, mediating and listening to issues and figuring out solutions. And I think that's what I've brought to the table in the school district is optimizing solutions for our school district.
Thank you. We're fortunate to have our fifth candidate, Paul Troy, join us now. And so, Paul, we'll go ahead, we're doing opening statements, and so you have one minute, and then we'll begin the questions.
Great, thank you, and I'm sorry for joining in late. My name is Paul Troy. I'm a current Secretary for the Board of Education. I've served for the last twelve years on the board. I have a background in engineering, finance, and school business, as, as I've worked in all three of those fields during this last twelve years. I, I've served the district in multiple capacities, but most notably as the Chair of the Building and Grounds Committee, which has jumped into the forefront here lately with the solar panels that are there. I believe that I still have a lot to offer to the district. I've lived here, like many other people, for a long time as being part of the great wagon train migration back in the late nineties, when my wife first, wife and I first moved out here. I have two kids, one who's a graduate of the district, and one who's going through her senior year through the COVID environment, and she'll be starting college next year. Both of those kids have gone start to finish in the district, and I look forward to continuing my capacity here in the next four years.
Thank you, Paul. All right. We now have some questions to ask the candidates, and it will give you each one minute to answer those questions, and we'll start in the rotation. And so, we'll start with you, Tara. And your first question is, what experience or skills have prepared you to serve as a school board member?
So, I have twenty years of experience in global human resources roles, supporting small and, and large organizations. So, I worked at Motorola for almost twenty of those years. And I think having a global and international kind of perspective, as well as from a technology perspective, I really understand what businesses need, you know, in the future, in terms of the types of skills. From an HR perspective, I certainly have always advocated for employees, created development plans, as well as strategies for our people when times have been really great and when times have been very challenging. So I think that definitely would be, you know, an asset to the team. In addition to that, you know, outside of a work perspective, I was the board president for my kids' preschool. I've done things like Team World Vision, which is focused on bringing clean water to underserved areas.
Good, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
All right, good. And then, Kate, you'll speak second. Experiences or skills that have prepared you to serve as a school board member?
I have been in customer service since my first job, and a lot of customer service is just listening and problem-solving and dealing with people. So I guess you could say I'm in the business of people. I've worked for Walgreens for twenty-four years, so, and working any kind of job when you work retail is developing a thick skin. So, I'm glad I have that already, because I know the, the board has needed their thick skin this year, for sure. I am one that rolls up their sleeves and gets to work. I am not one to sit back and watch. If there's work to be done, I will pitch in and I will help. I love volunteering, I love people and supporting others, so, and I think that's, that's a big part of what we do with the board, we support people.
Great, thank you. Tony, you'll speak third. What experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a school board member?
First of all, the experience of being a school board member for fourteen of the last fifteen years. But attribute-wise, my ability to listen, Kate's correct, you gotta be able to listen to people. I, I'm humble enough not to feel like I, I know everything. I listen to everybody in the room. I assimilate that information, formulate it based on what I know, what makes sense, and come to what I generally feel is a good decision-making process that, that makes it fair and just in the situation. She's also right, we both, we have developed our body armor suits this year. It's, you know, but, you know, the big thing is, I personally don't spend a lot of time or pay a lot of attention to social media. I focus, like, on the issues at hand, what matters. There's a lot of outside pressures, but you have to just, you have to listen, get good information, and make the best decisions for all, and I think that's what we've attempted to do all along.
All right, thank you. Paul, we'll give you your, your experience or skills.
Thank you. So, aside from, like Tony, I've served for the last twelve years. I've done so in the capacity of Vice President of the Board over that time, as well as Secretary. On a personal level, I've been a long-term substitute, paraprofessional in a special needs classroom, not in our district. So I've gotten a unique look at what special needs classrooms go through from a personnel standpoint, as well as an education standpoint. I'm a logical, fact-based person, and that, that comes from my, my engineering background. I'm a numbers person, and that's evident in my, my financial background. I have two years of, of education and state certification to be a school business official within the state of Illinois. That included an internship where I participated in the meetings and inner workings of a school district to understand not just finance, but also the different levels in which finance affects schools, including classrooms and teacher contracts as well.
All right, thank you. And Sean, fifth position?
Yep, so I think my past twenty years in financial background of being Retail Director for First National Bank has allowed me to make those sound financial decisions. On many of the boards that I've served in, as well as listening to different sectors of the community, I ask a lot of questions just to make sure that I understand things that are going on, and to make sure that I'm speaking for everyone in the community, not just the sides that I see fit. So, I think that allows me to make those sound decisions for the, for the community as a whole, as well as my job allows me to participate and be a volunteer within the community as an ambassador for Huntley School District.
All right, thank you. Our second question.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes, please.
That, that, was it an opening statement you were gonna read from Leslie, or a closing statement?
We're gonna place it at the end.
Very good, okay, no problem. I just wanted to make sure, yeah.
No, I, I caught that. All right, next question, and we'll start with Kate. How can the school board know if their goals are being accomplished and their policies are being carried out?
I think it's important to set goals, timelines, deadlines, be reflective of the work they've done. Are we meeting our goals in a timely manner? Are we following through with what we say we're going to do? Are we, are we not, we're not just putting out empty promises and not, work's not getting done on them. So, I think as long as we document, you know, our goals, our plans, and have deadlines and timelines in place, and then, like I said, we're reflective, I think that we can guarantee the, the work gets done.
Good, all right. And then, Tony?
Sorry, Kate, I'm gonna make you reread.
That's all right. How can the board know if their goals are being accomplished and the policies are being carried out?
Okay, so I thought you said, okay, so, as a district, we, we have a five-year strategic plan that states all of the specific goals that the district has, both short-term and long-term. Those goals were all, strategic plan was a community-based, community-led program that occurred back a year ago, that kind of guides and leads us. So, what our job is to, is to monitor that, we request to get updates on it, no less than semi-annually from the administration, they provide those updates, and we decide at that point whether we're, how we're moving along towards those goals. So, it's, it's more the, the community-based goals, not necessarily the school board's goals, because we've adapted what our community has asked us to, to do.
All right, good. Paul, same question. How can the board know if their goals are being accomplished and the policies are being carried out?
Exactly what Tony said. That, that strategic plan, that's the whole purpose of having the strategic plan, is to get that community-based input on what's important to the community, and then work with administration to receive those timely responses and updates on how those goals are progressing on. Those, that progress is not done with regularity, because some of that involves student testing, and student testing doesn't happen as frequently, so sometimes those measures can't be tabulated or put together until the end of the year, like what's happening right now. The kids had tests that they took at the beginning of the year, and now, the last set of tests weren't taken until March, the beginning of March. So, we just got results at the last board meeting on how that, how kids have progressed even during this COVID environment. So, it's our job to, to look over those goals, continue to focus on them, and then work with administration to understand how things have resulted going forward.
All right, thank you. Sean?
Yeah, sounds like we're repeating each other here, but the five-year plan is super important. You know, what, what really is important is, it's not just about the school district or the school board, it's about the teachers, the staff, all the community, and the parents that are involved together to make, to, to row in the right direction. And in order for, for us to do that, we have to have the buy-in of all the stakeholders in the community, and I feel that we, as a community of District 158, do a really good job of that, and continue to move forward, especially in difficult times like we've been through this year. And I feel that we have accomplished most, if not all of our goals this year and moving forward.
All right, thank you. Tara?
So I think there's a number of ways that the board can measure accomplishments, and certainly, the first, which has been mentioned, is, you know, the achievement and measurement of those strategic goals. But I think, obviously, looking at student achievement, looking at our ability to attract and retain high-quality talent, evaluating the effectiveness of our staff, as well as the effectiveness of how we utilize our budgets are definitely ways that we can look at how we are effective.
All right, thank you. All right, question number three. What's your position for vocational education for those students not college-bound? And Tony, we'll start with you.
Well, that's become a very important item in the district, a point of focus and emphasis. That program, the vocational area, went through a significant review, and they came forward with a number of proposals over the last year, many of which have been implemented. We were just presented on Thursday in regards to automotive. We had five students that already passed their automotive certifications, and they expected another fifteen would have that done by the end of the year. We've been in contact and we are developing programs with our local unions for the trades. So, we recognize that not every student will be college-bound, and we were doing, we're off there at the school district, one of our teachers is doing a phenomenal job of making connections and, and getting us involved in that area to support those students who might go into the vocational area.
All right, great. And Paul?
So, on, on top of that, one of the other areas that we've excelled at has been, oh, gosh. It just escaped me, and I'm so sorry.
Vocational education?
Yeah, no, there, I was just writing this up for somebody else, and, and there's an area that, that we have excelled at. I, I know that one of the areas that this vocational department helps students with is doing job interviews, and so lining up people from the different areas within the Chamber of Commerce, obviously teachers, Board of Education members, to be mock interviewers for these students and prepare them for their job interviews as they go forward. There, there's been an expansion in, in coursework that we've offered. Oh, gosh, the automotive was the one that Tony mentioned. We have a teacher who, who's gone to the extent of trying to put parts in the hands of students for them to help take things apart and
All right, good.
how to do their jobs.
All right, good, good. I appreciate that. Sean?
Yep, I believe a hundred percent in the, the trades that we can, can do much better. We need to service those, those students much better. And I think there's a lot of opportunity there with my role in the Chamber of Commerce. I would like to work closer with the school board, or school district, in order to help service this area. And just in my role as a business leader, I see this as an area of, of opportunity that we can get better in and allow more opportunity for these students to grow if, if college is not a choice for them.
Okay, good. Tara, position for vocational ed?
I'm highly supportive. You know, four-year colleges aren't always the direction that all of our students are looking to go. So I think we definitely have a, an opportunity to meet a broader need. You know, some of the things that were already mentioned that I agree with, I think it's really important to partner with local businesses and trade associations to provide the opportunities or realize how we might have, you know, great partnerships within the community to make them happen. Utilizing your academy structures, like we currently have, for a structure like intern, observation, or mentoring, as well as utilizing a program like Vanguard, where kids can look at opportunities for instructional learning and then apply through projects that are more technical or vocationally-based, I think would all be fantastic ways to approach it.
Good, thank you. All right, Kate?
So I realized after my opening statement that I didn't mention why I'm so passionate about special education, and that would be because my freshman has high-functioning autism. He has made it very clear to us that he is not going to college. So, obviously, I am very excited about the vocational opportunities we have that hopefully will serve him and other students. Again, they're not, that maybe a four-year college is not an option they want, or that an option they're interested in. I would love to see more dual-credit programs that are associated with McHenry County College, especially like in the culinary arts, maybe in the healthcare field, where, like with pharmacy technicians or CNAs, where they can get that experience, both in, learning in the high school and through McHenry County College, or continue their education at McHenry County College, if that's something they're interested in.
All right, thank you. All right, next question. And it has a couple of parts to it, so I'll read it a couple of times. If you were given choices as to what to do with a budget surplus, what would you choose and why? One choice is give it back to the taxpayers, return registration fees to parents, provide hazard pay to teachers if they've been in the classroom this year, and then the last, keep the money as a surplus in the district funds. So, Paul, we're gonna start with you, and again, should the school have a surplus, you've got a couple of choices. Give it back to the taxpayer, return it in registration fees, provide the teachers hazard pay if they've worked during this COVID school year, and keep the money, or keep the money as a surplus.
First of all, I'm gonna dovetail a little bit. The, the program that I was struggling to, to think of on the last question was the incubator program, which is actually to help future entrepreneurs. Regarding your question, I think it depends on how large the budget surplus is. We, we've been contemplating the idea or the notion of crediting families their fees for this coming year, just because of the, the environment that we're currently in with COVID. And I know that other school districts have, have been exploring the idea of doing the same thing. If it's, if it's a, a large budget surplus, and in past years, we've actually used money to return bond money to the taxpayers. So, so there's a couple of different ways that that can be done outside of even the, the options that you've presented. So, I think, I think it depends on the budget surplus that you're talking about, and then we can make an educated decision on how to best return that to either families or the taxpayers, or find another way to apply that.
All right, thank you. Sean, multi-part question?
Yep, so to build upon a little bit of what Paul was talking about, we've, we've discussed this a little bit during our meetings. And for me, it's, you know, we've learned a little bit about hybrid this year. So, for me, it's a hybrid approach between A and B, returning it to the taxpayers, and returning the registration fees to parents. I think it should be a little bit of both, because I think our parents have been through a lot this year. But I think all of our taxpayers, even if they aren't parents, should see a little bit of benefit to that.
All right, thank you. Tara?
So I, I would agree. I, I think it's really dependent on the current environment. Normally, my recommendation would be to return it to the taxpayers. Given the challenges that the district is facing right now, kind of the unexpected costs with the pandemic, the shortfall in revenue, the need to attract and retain new talent, this year, my recommendation the need to attract and retain new talent, this year, my recommendation would be to keep the, the funds for potential current or very near term usage.
All right. Good. Kate? Budget surplus?
Um, I agree with Sean. We have, in Del Webb alone, we have ninety-six hundred people that live there and do not have children in this district and they pay taxes towards our school district. So I feel my first choice would be to give some of that back to the taxpayers. But also if it was like a large budget surplus, I would like to see the registration fees returned to the families as well.
All right. Good. Kate?
Oh, excuse me. It's all right. You can call me Katie.
Tony? I didn't circle your number.
Don't worry about it. Okay, it's, it's every budget year doesn't stand alone on itself. We're always looking at a five-year budget plan. And so one, one year with a surplus doesn't mean necessarily that that's how it's going to shake out for the next four or five years. So I'm, I'm, you know, we're going to be real careful. We have it, we have discussed it. We've discussed it like Sean and Paul have said in various approaches. There is no practical way to just give it back to the taxpayers. The best way, if we are able to work something out, I, I concur, hybrid way would be it. And it would be more in the form of debt abatement. So that doesn't screw up your, your normal tax levy. And I'm, I'm absolutely, if, if the finances allow for it, I would be in favor of doing that. And I would be in favor of doing it in a hybrid manner.
All right. Thank you. Our fifth question deals with culturally responsive teaching. So what do you know about the culturally responsive teaching and learning standards put forth by the State Board of Education? And share with us what your viewpoint is. So Sean, we'll start with you.
You know, my viewpoint is, is I really feel like it's just another tool that allows our teachers to get closer with their students and understand where each of them come from. And I truly feel that, you know, as our teachers continue to learn more about their students, they learn more and get better at what they do. And I feel our, our teachers are really good at what they do already. And this is just another tool that will just continue to make them even better at what they do on a daily basis.
All right. Good. Tara?
I am familiar and I am supportive of it. I liken the education and training to, you know, maybe what medical students go through to help them understand, understand the whole person or the whole patient that they're treating, you know, not just the person in front of them. So I think they're better able to treat a patient or teach a student when they understand and value the experiences and perspectives that only they can uniquely have. I think it's a fantastic way to get our teachers closer to the community. They're very valuable now. And I think, you know, having those relationships within the community can only, you know, increase, increase their value. And I think it's so important to help our, our kids be able to learn how to advocate for themselves. And I think that's part of the process of, you know, helping our teachers learn these new tools.
Great. Thank you, Kate?
Yes, I'm also familiar with the standards. And I believe it's, they're very important. I work in health, the healthcare field, so I know how important diversity is. I, my pharmacy manager is Nigerian and my staff pharmacist is Cuban. And we're all accepting of each other. But when I was growing up, we didn't, I grew up in Lake Zurich. We didn't have a very diverse community. So when I went off to college, I, you know, learned more about other people. I believe that having our teachers have the resources now to engage our students about their culture, their, maybe even this religious diversity or just, you know, their disability, that can only benefit our students. Also, all of our students have a right to feel accepted and like they belong regardless of their race, their gender, their religious background, their economic diversity, or even their disability.
All right. Thank you. Tony?
Well, of course, I'm, I'm all for people being more accepting of each other. I think probably the biggest attribute people that's missing in today's world is empathy for each other. Better understanding of where each other is coming from. So anything that, you know, sensitizes people, teachers, whoever is going to be in the workforce working with our kids to, to better acclimate them to a world of acceptance and diversity is, is a definitely a positive step forward.
Good. Thank you. And then Paul?
So this subject is actually a little bit personal to me. My parents are both immigrants and I speak a foreign language of my own. I'm Ukrainian, have a Ukrainian background. My parents came to this country as kids. And if not for being embraced at that point in time for the family that they were, even despite their inability to speak the English language, they, they certainly would not have remained and become the people who they are. And I would not be here before you today. So this is what this set of standards tells me is that this is an opportunity to start open dialogue and conversations with people to learn more about them, just as other people have said here. It, it's important to have those conversations and because if they're not started, you, you never learn about, I think it was Kate that said, but the whole person or Tara that said the whole person. That's, that is something that's missing. And if we can give teachers and ultimately the students tools to, to open those communications and dialogue with one another to learn more about each other, I think our whole world would be a much better place.
All right. Good. Good. We have time enough for one or two more questions. So we'll go ahead and we'll start with Tara. What's on the minds of the parents in your school district? You were to walk into a coffee shop. What's on the minds of the parents in District one fifty eight?
Sure. Well, I think certainly, you know, this last year has been a definite focus on getting kids back to school. And it's very exciting to see the progress that the school district has made. So I think that would definitely be forefront on their minds as well as, you know, what types of developmental gaps that our kids have. And again, with the recent update at the, at the board that was definitely addressed and, and it feels like we're making great progress. But I would say that to me would in particular be one of the areas of continued concern that we, we certainly don't want to take our eye off of. And the programs set up for the summer are very exciting. You know, I, I guess the other area would be, you know, in terms of, you know, kind of fiscal responsibility and, and the balance between having the best school possible and our ability to pay for it as taxpayers.
All right. Kate, walk in a coffee shop in Hotley. What's on the minds of the parents in your district?
I'm in the coffee shop a lot in Hotley. My, I think the parents are concerned. I mean, for first and foremost, they were concerned about getting him back in person. And that's happening very soon, having, you know, whoever wants to be in school five days a week is able to be there. I think they're concerned about the learning loss for those students while they were remote. I think they're also concerned about mental health. I think they're worried about students not having those interactions with friends and direct interactions with teachers. I know my kids are playing way too much Fortnite lately. And that's the only, the main interaction they have with, with their friends. So they're not used to having those in-person conversations with their friends anymore. They need to get used to being around people again. But I know the school is, the school district, the board, the administration are very focused on the mental health aspect of getting back to in-person learning and having the resources there for the students.
All right. Good. Tony? Walk in the coffee shop. What's on the minds of parents in your district?
Well, I think what's on the minds today is they're thankful that they have the opportunity, have their kids going back to school five days a week full-time. Like Kate said, social emotional wellbeing is probably the forefront of where, where the kids are at these days, just because many of them haven't been in school as much. They haven't been able to interact. And it's, you know, it's no different for the adults right now. I think the whole, whole country, whole area is going through that to a degree. So I, I just think everybody needs to keep doing what they need to do as far as staying as safe as possible so we can be in school. So we'll be able to continue being in school five days a week full-time. And, and just will, ultimately, we will all overcome the, the, what's transpired over the last twelve months. I'm pretty confident, especially with some of the measures we've got in place for summer. We're giving people a lot of options and at no cost to be able to get their kids back in school with, for their learning issues.
Good. Paul? You went in a coffee shop?
Still waiting for the coffee shop. It's been a very difficult. No, I think everybody is spot on here with their answer. I think the social emotional learning are the, were some of the questions, the majority of questions are going to be is people, people in general reintegrate, whether it's, it's kids or adults going back to work. It is, is how can we take advantage of the opportunities for this summer? For those kid, for our kids, for those parents who have kids, where, where they deem that they need to get some, some of their skills move forward. As, as we found out on Thursday, not, not, learning has still continued even in this digital realm. It's done so in different degrees and to different lengths. But now how can we kind of help, help everybody get back to that sense of normalcy? Also, I think there, there are going to start being questions popping up about what the fall looks like, whether we're going to continue in a hybrid model or, or are we going to be able to start with open schools from the very beginning? So as, as the vaccinations continue to proceed, we'll see how that all goes as well.
Great. Thank you. Sean, you're in the coffee shop. What's on the minds of parents in your district?
Yeah, much like everyone has stated, the social and emotional aspect I think is super important. And much like Paul just said, I think, I think we're already, we're excited that we're getting most of our kids back, you know, full-time, five days a week now, but we are focused on what the fall looks like. And do we still have this bus, this bus issue that will continue for us as a district and much like other, other districts? And so I think, you know, that's going to be a focus of, of the board, you know, and the, and Dr. Rowe and his cabinet over the next few months, just to make sure that we can overcome that if the limitations on the bus does not change. And we can make sure that all of our kids that want to be back in school can be back in school come this fall.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to read it. That's the last of our questions. We did have one candidate that was not able to be here and she gave us a statement. I'll read that statement and then we'll go into a two-minute closing statement for each of the candidates. This is a statement from Leslie Melendez, candidate for School Board District one fifty eight. I appreciate the opportunity to have my statement read this afternoon. I enjoyed being, I would enjoy sharing my vision and accomplishments, but I have a scheduling conflict that prevents me from being there. And I invite people to visit my Facebook page, Leslie L E S L I Melendez M E L E N D Y dash one fifty eight School Board. My family and I have lived in Hotley for twenty-one years and I volunteered in many capacities over those twenty years. All three of my children are products of one fifty eight schools. In addition to volunteer activities, I've had the pleasure of working the schools over the time with both preschool, mid, middle school levels. I love my time at the school. It gave me an opportunity to become friends with teachers and parents and see things from a different lens. For the past eight years, I've worked in state and local government. So I analyze and advise on education legislation and bills moving through the General Assembly. I want to continue my service to District one fifty eight as a board member because this area of expertise is rare and very much needed in today's legislative climate where school districts have to fight for equity in every single dollar they receive in state funding. In addition, we are still in the midst of a global pandemic. And I strongly believe that we need experienced leadership to see us to the other side. It's been a year since an executive order by the governor closed our schools. There's no rulebook or action plan for dealing with education as it relates to global health pandemics. Are there things in retrospect we wish we would have done differently? Certainly. I know for certain the current Board of Education members did their best, given the information we had and based on decisions, what was best for the entire District one fifty eight community, including students, teachers, support staff and others who are intricately involved with the education system. Safety was and remains our priority. Going forward as things normalize, we need to assess the learning gaps some of our stool, school students, excuse me, will have during this interrupted learning. And we'll also pay close attention to the social emotional health of the students and staff. I look forward to getting back to a school environment and continuing the things we started before COVID, such as the STEM program in the elementary school, growing the Vanguard program at the high school and finish our solar project, beginning our diversity committee and many other things. Thank you, the legal women voters for hosting this forum and for giving me the opportunity to submit a statement. I'd appreciate your vote for the school board. Thank you. So now we'll start closing statements, two minutes. And we're going to do it in the reverse order that we did the opening statements. So Paul, two-minute closing statement. And by the way, please take the time to either mention a website or an email and if you need to spell it out. So Paul, thank you.
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll start that way. So my Facebook page can be found at Paul Troy for the number four, D one five eight. And that is a place where I answer questions from individuals and the community who pose them. And, and I probably do so and to great length because I want people to understand the big picture of, of what goes on even behind the scenes that, that people don't see every day. I bring a, a, I believe, a tremendous amount of experience to the board, having served for, as I mentioned before, twelve years, both in, in a capacity as a vice president and secretary over that time. I also serve our region of school boards in the capacity currently as the vice chair for the Kishawaki region. Education-wise, I have an engineering physics degree. I also have an MBA and, and a chief school business official certification to be a certified school business official anywhere within the state of Illinois. My parents are immigrants. I, I, I don't shy away from that at all. It gives me a unique understanding to a community that, that is, is growing within our boundaries and wants to be heard and acknowledged. I bring a ton of professionalism, both in that, from that engineering mindset, but also from a finance mindset. During our time on the board, during my time on the board, the one-in, one-to-one initiative started. And if it wasn't for that one-to-one initiative, a lot of the work that we've been able to do in keeping education in the hands of our kids and at their desktops would have been very much harder to accomplish. We have youth residency program that began through the hospital. We've done a great deal in other academies through the fine arts, engineering academies. We've expanded facilities in order to give students opportunities. And I think at the crux of this entire discussion, our job as board members is to give students as many opportunities to advance their education, whether it's beyond high school or into the trades. I'm Paul Troy and I want to be part of the school board for the next four years.
All right. Thank you. Tony, two-minute closing.
Okay, well, I don't have a website. I don't even have a yard sign. Okay, that's, I've never have, never will. I'm, I'm, I'm here to offer my services. The tagline that we use here at Trinitis and Company is knowledge plus experience equals results. And that's what I deliver every day and have for fourteen of the last fifteen years on the school board. Come up with innovative ways to integrate our finances with our education system to optimize, have a high-performing school district that that operates at a low cost per student. Something I I had envisioned before I came on the board that could be accomplished. Didn't want to be stuck in the rut that we don't have money and it's poor us. That's not what we set out to do here. We've we figured out what we've had. We've done a lot of cost-saving measures while I've been here. And and we've devoted resources to the classroom. What I bring is my ability to work with people. I typically negotiate many of our contracts with our administrators and our teachers unions, teacher union and other union. So I'm somebody who works well with people, who sees both sides of the story and finds the common ground that makes things work in our district. And that's what I would lean on here is now there's people who are running on the concept of change. They aren't participating in this forum, unfortunately. But I would put forward to you that this district has been on a trajectory, solid trajectory upward for the last ten-plus years. And not that the board is fully responsible for, but the board that's been in place has allowed for administration to move our district forward and focus on education and provide all these fantastic programs that we have that no one else can compare to in the area.
All right. Thank you. Kate.
Okay, so I have a doctor pharmacy degree from and I didn't, the reason I got into pharmacy is to help people. I didn't get into pharmacy because I like learning about drugs. I like helping people. So I guess you could say I'm in the the business of people. I enjoy problem solving. I like a challenge. I love volunteering, whether it be in the community or for our schools. I used to volunteer in the schools all the time before I before I was working full-time, giving vaccines. But I used to do, work with the teachers and get to know my son's teachers, their classes, and I miss that so much. I look forward to hopefully getting back in there again, even if I don't have kids in a particular school, especially if I'm on the board. I would love to just go help any of the teachers that, you know, that are looking for parent volunteers. I believe that the school board, at least for me, is the ultimate volunteer position. We give voice to our community with our focus on students. My website, I forgot to mention that, is Kate four D one fifty eight. So Kate, the number four, and then D one fifty eight. And same thing for my Facebook page. I would love the opportunity to be on the board and contribute to my community and with the constant focus of our students and teachers in mind.
Great. Thank you. Tara.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters, to Anna, Kate, and Richard for helping to moderate. I definitely appreciate the opportunity to be with the other candidates as well and and hear their voice. I am the product of two teachers, and I chose not to become a teacher. And that's probably because I watched them manage just the difficult and heroic role that they played. However, I also watched and saw the impact that they both had on their community and the children that they had in classes or that they coached. And it has affected me profoundly. And I feel, you know, the role that educators play in our society is undervalued. And it's important that we all take an active role and make an impact. And personally, I I love to be one of those people that helps make a positive change for all of our kids. And that's kind of where I've I've spent my time in my career as well, is, you know, the development of people. So my Facebook page is, it's just facebook.com forward slash Tara Messino D one fifty eight. I'm excited to participate. If I'm not one selected, I still certainly support and appreciate the role that our school board plays as well as our our educators and staff. So thank you.
Good. Thank you. Sean, we'll wrap it up with you. Two-minute closing statement.
Yeah, so my Facebook page is Sean Craddy dash D one five eight School, Huntley School Board. I'm happy to answer questions much like the rest of the candidates and will definitely answer all of them that come my way. You know, I think I'm happy to work for a company that is a family business that allows us to be in in the community. I think if you were to ask most people, my community involvement may seem crazy at times. But my company not only allows it, but encourages me to be in the community and giving back. And that's exactly what I do in all of my positions that I serve on at this time. You know, I think being a being on the board, our job is to speak for the community. And I feel like with all the stakeholders that I know in the community and that I am in in front of on a day-to-day basis allows me to, you know, have that voice and bring that to the table during discussions that may come up. And then my financial background allows me to make those sound decisions that I think the school board definitely needs. I think our school board is in a great position. And I can only see it getting better year after year. And I'm hopeful that my eight months on the board will allow me at least another four years, if not longer. And I plan to be in the district for many, many years with my kids being young. So thank you so much for having us and appreciate the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. Anna, I'll turn it back over to you. And we'll get you unmute.
I would like to thank you all for joining. Thank you so much for being here today. We would like to remind everybody to please make sure we wish you well and to make sure anybody that has yard signs, please recycle those. I want to thank Kate and the League of Women Voters for being here today. And I thank you all very much for your time. You have a wonderful day.